Call the meeting of the Bay County Board of Commissioners to order on Tuesday, April 16, 2024 in the commission chambers. Roll call, please.
Eamonn?
Here.
Benajak?
Present.
Mallett?
Here.
Herrick?
Here.
Brad Keith?
Here.
Hoyer?
Present.
Pickett?
Here. Glad to see everybody here. Got the whole crowd together. invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come before you this afternoon, thanking you for the guidance and understanding that you have given this Board of Commissioners. We ask again today for your help and direction so this board may make the fair and proper decisions for all citizens of Bay County. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have the minutes from 3:1924.
Motion approved.
Support?
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda? Any additions? Otherwise, a motion to approve.
So move.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizen input. If you would like to speak, approach the stand. Don't have to sign your name. State your name. And you have five minutes. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Close the citizen input. Petitions and communications. Have a proclamation resolution for the Knights of Columbus Day, April 20. And actually, I heard it's actually today. Somebody said, we'll have them talk about that. Let's have you read the proclamation.
Sure. So, a resolution by the Bay County Board of Commissioners, whereas on April 16, 1899, Knights of Columbus Council Number 414 was established in Bay City by a group of 49 men, and whereas throughout its history of existence, Knights of Columbus Council Number 414 has contributed many hours of labor and fundraising efforts to help the people of Bay City and the developmentally disabled around the world. And whereas it is a pleasure for the Bay County Board of Commissioners and Bay County Executive to extend greetings and congratulations to the members of the Knights of Columbus Council Number 414 as they celebrate 125 years as an integral part of our community, and whereas the unswerving commitment of the leadership and members of Council Number 414 and the interaction within our community has always been evident and it is to be commended. And whereas, while there have been many changes in society, in our community, and in the way we have lived over the past 125 years, Council Number 414 has stayed true to the goals and ideals set forth by Father Michael J. McGivney when he established the Knights of Columbus in 1882 to serve those in need. And they have done so in the most admirable manner. Therefore, be it resolved that with pride, the Bay County Board of Commissioners and Bay County Executive hereby honor the Knights of Columbus Council Number 414 on the occasion of its 125th anniversary by designating April 20, 2024, as Knights of Columbus Day. Be it further resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners and Bay County Executive offer their best wishes for many more years of outstanding and exemplary service to all Bay County residents.
Looking for a motion?
A little bit. Support?
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. If you would step forward. So it is the 16th, right? It's a special day. Okay. So, Jim's here. So, I just want to thank you for your service. I belong to the Lions Club, which is another service in the NCA, the Salvation Army is another service in the NCA, and we all work together to help the community. So, thank you.
We appreciate all the Knights of Columbus organizations that we have in the region, and especially Port 14 is special. I've been a guest there many, many times, and we know that you've been an integral part of our community and appreciate all the good work that you do. It's why I'm proud to designate April 20 as Knights of Columbus Day in Bay County to encompass not just 414, but all the Knights of Columbuses that have really enhanced the quality of life for all of us. So, congratulations. 125 years is something that very few organizations ever get to celebrate, be it a church or a business or any other institution. It's a long, long history of service. So, congratulations, and we will see you on Saturday.
Thank you.
Sure. It's always a tough part, but first of all, I'd like to thank everyone here in the county for this. This means a lot. 125 years is special for us. I am the Grand Knight of our council, and Allen is our Deputy Grand Knight. And we certainly have put a lot of our blood, sweat, and tears into this and what we do, supported lots of things in the community, and not just our church, but to organizations like Special Olympics, which is an organization that's also near and dear to my heart. My son's an athlete. Also Camp Fish Tales and Food Pantries and just all sorts of stuff, especially going through the COVID and where people needed that. We just, we do a lot, and we just are excited for what we do, and we hope to continue for another 125 years. So.
Thank you. Thank you. Shall we clap?
Yep.
Drain Commissioner, I don't think he's here, but his report is in the office. It's a 2023 annual report. Due to its size, the document is not printed as part of this agenda, but available for review in the Board of Commissioners' office, the Drain Office, or the County Clerk's office. It can also be found at https://www.baycounty-mi.gov/draincommissioner. So, I'm sure you have all that memorized, but you can look at our website. I need a motion to receive the Drain Commissioner's report.
Move and support.
Okay. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I did have a chance to look at it. You know, if you might want to look at your townships, your areas you represent, because there's a lot of drains that run through the county of Bay. So, a lot of work.
If you don't.
Yeah. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Committee of the Whole, Commissioner Benajak, from April 2 meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Resolution Number 2024-42, MIDC grant renewal. I move this resolutions.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-43, MDOC grant funds for the 2025 year. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-44, 2025 service provider contracts agreements and MOU. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-45, memorandum of understanding with MDOT for the year 2025. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries?
Resolution Number 2024-46, premium pay for direct care workers funding for the 2024 year. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-47, 2024 Senior Project Fresh Market Fresh Program. I move this, I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-48, Bay City Chapter 513 of the Military Order of the Purple Heart Convention. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is, by the way, this is an annual, well, not an annual, but it's a convention they have periodically, and we have the funding for this budget. Thank you.
You didn't ask for.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Resolution Number 2024-49, Golf Course Fee Schedule Revisions for the Youth On Course Program. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-50, People Driven Self-Service Password Reset Budget Adjustment. Statement of Work. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? I just reset my password, so it was easy if we have our person back there. They have a new system now. The, what's it called? The Duo, Duo system. It's a way to verify. And I was just at a meeting yesterday where somebody got called into the service to reset their password. I was on, it was on 60 Minutes, discussion about people hacking in, and there's a group of professional hackers, but they're also trying to sabotage some of the utilities and things like that. So, it was an interesting story about this group that were able to hack into a system and shut down the, I think it was electrical system that they had. So, definitely out there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-51, Bid Award for Bay County Health Department Electronic Health Records Software, Put the Ganyon Health. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-52, Bid Award for Bay County Community Center Gym Floor to Dynamic Sports Construction. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? I played on the gym floor. It was a very old gym floor. It was a very slippery gym floor, and now it's going to be a real nice gym floor, right? I said, so you don't slip and slide and.
Correct. It'll be a multipurpose floor, so you'll be able to do sports, but also have tables and chairs, so you'll still be able to do baby showers and all sorts of stuff, along with basketball, volleyball, and pickleball. So, it'll be very nice. And it's original to the building, so it's, it's time.
Very old. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-53, Payables. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Let's go on to Committee of the Whole, April 9 meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number 2024-54, Fairground Improvements on Date Request. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? Anybody here from the Fair Board? If you want to speak, then do a little promotion coming up in August.
Yeah, so the Bay County Fair is going to be August 6 through the 10. We actually have a really cool fair going on this year. We have some new things going. We're actually bringing back Nidget Wrestling, because that was a big hit last year. So, we're going to have that again. But we're also having, offering a free horse pull on Thursday, the night of our auction. That's the 8th. So, that's going to be a free event, so anybody from the public can come and watch that. We'd like to promote agriculture, and that's going to be an agricultural one. And of course, then we still have our dirt rags and our bumping grind and figure eight. So, this year, in the midway, we're actually going to have a, which is free, because we have free admission. We have a sand art exhibition, so they're going to come and build some big sand sculpture throughout the week. We're also going to have a butterfly exhibit, so that's going to be free, and we're actually going to plan a butterfly release. So, I think that's going to be either Friday or Saturday. No date for that yet. But anyway, we're looking forward to it.
Mr. Herrick?
I just, you weren't here, but we were seeing your praises last week. You know, the great job you guys are doing out there.
I was here.
Oh, but you know, some of these, and just so you remember, some of these commissioners are looking forward to buying a side of beef or a chicken or a duck or something like that. They absolutely love it.
We have, if we have a commissioner that would like to buy another one.
But you guys, you guys are doing a great job.
Yeah, we've got a great board. We actually, this year, it's kind of a joke, we have three board members who are pregnant. So, our joke is that we can't find volunteers, so we're making them. So, that's what our thing is. And we're going to have four babies at the fair this year.
Oh, wow.
It's unusual for a fair board to have a young fair board, and we do, which is kind of nice. So, anyway, so we're looking forward to that, too. That's going to be fun.
Good.
But yeah, come and see us.
Did you say the dates?
August 6 through the 10.
Okay. Tuesday through Saturday?
Yep.
Thank you. And the auction will be on Thursday, as usual?
Yeah. Yep. Saturday 6.
You're all invited.
Yes, good time. Thank you for your support. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-55, Replacement Upgrades Celebrate Mobile Forensics UFED Touch 2. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolution Number 2024-56, Blue Cross Blue Shield Inmate Service Contract. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-57, Vertev Maintenance Agreement. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-58, Full-Time Supervisor Position Higher to Two-Year Rate. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? Julie made the trip over. She's sitting in the back row there. I'm going to have her come up and speak this a little bit. Hopefully.
Good afternoon.
It'll be successful. I see there's two positions. I saw somebody here, some positions have opened up, or you've had some people leave, or you're not fully staffed yet, then?
No, we are not. The state of Michigan really likes to take my employees. So, we do have a supervisor position available. We have an internal candidate who has experience, very good at the crisis situations that we have coming up with our individuals. And so, with that experience, we, he requested to have that higher pay.
And there was some talk about transitioning to a different, like the court's taking over the ownership of the, early discussion.
Very separate conversation, very early conversation.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I know supervision restrictions are pretty strict right now, what you can, what you can do makes it pretty difficult.
Yes, different rules, different, one's a license and one's an inspection.
All my great teachers would be in jail by now for wrapping me on the knuckles or making me write or whatever. So, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-59, 2025 Budget Schedule. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Herrick, you do the honors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution Number 2024-60, Reports to the County Executive for March. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-61, The 2024 Bay County Equalization Report. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? We had the presentation last week. It's in the packet here. He's asking for approval on adoption of the, of the report, and it will be available in the office for reading also. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
That is all from the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Chairman.
We have report of county officials, county executive.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, you just mentioned some initial discussions, and we've met with Judge Sheeran about exploring the possibility of shifting the juvenile home to the court system as the rules for the staff in interacting with juveniles would be, would be a little more secure for the staff. But that's very preliminary, and we'll have a report later on that. Just want to, want to mention that we had seven corporations submit responses to our RFP for the new Bay County Health Services Center on Wilder Road, the former Art Van facility. So, we'll be going through that process and selecting, hopefully, a good qualified contractor. And all of the responses that were submitted were excellent, so. But as you know, we'll be going through that process and narrowing it down to one that will be awarded the contract, and we're excited about moving forward on that transformation of the Health Services Center.
Yep. Thank you. Let's see. Commissioner comments? Any Commissioner comments?
None.
We're planning on having a presentation on the 14th of May on the pool feasibility study. They gave us a preliminary report yesterday. They're going to do, I think they're going to speak to the people interested in the pool and then have a presentation here on May 14. So, we'll have a little more information for everybody. Any unfinished business? New business? Public input? Another chance for public input. Dr. Maroni, you have any comments?
This commission requested a community assessment on opioid use that was put together by the health department. I've had a chance to review it with the treatment and prevention providers in the city, and they can't all be here because we have to see patients. So, I'm representing Kyle Hanshaw from Pier 360, Katie Ball from Bay County Prevention Network, Jackie List, Alis Psychological, and Renee from Sacred Heart. None of this is meant to be personal, and we have to value and cherish our right to agree and disagree, so I'm going to highlight some of my disagreements with the community assessment. And I promise to keep it to five minutes or less. It's not always easy. The first comment that I have is, the structure and format is from the Bronx Opioid Use Assessment from 2018, and the data was collected in 2017. So, the format, including the questions used, are eight years old, and we're in a post-COVID, post-fentanyl environment that make that very difficult. I don't think it's an easy translation. My second comment is that the report, based on this eight-year difference, looks at heroin. And I think you've seen this slide on some of my other stuff. We're talking about fentanyl today, and this is different, very difficult, and prevention efforts are not as clear, nor are they as strong. My third comment is, it talks about expert and project assert in our prevention efforts, and Katie Ball and I from Prevention Network agree that in evidence-based studies, project assert and expert have only been valid in alcohol recovery. They've never been validated in opioid recovery. The other thing that was predominant to discuss with all of my treatment providers is David seemed eager, and David had a very transparent heart. He pushed all of us to feel like we were part of the problem, and we're not getting along, and there's not enough collaboration, and that word "collaboration" kept coming up. And Harvard Business Review clearly says, collaboration has to be organic. It can't be forced from an outside authority. I pick up the phone and call Renee at Sacred Heart. We collaborate. We're going to have dinner later. I pick up the phone and call Jackie List. We've been having dinner for over a year, and Kyle Hanshaw and I have talked for six or seven years, and Katie Ball and I are working on education efforts for the county for opioid education and training. So, I think there was this false image that we don't collaborate, and collaboration, according to the Harvard Business Review, slows you down and dilutes energy sometimes. What I also found interesting is David stopped the opioid data in 2021, and I gave him this chart, and I gave this to you all about two months ago, showing that we had improvement with treatment, and he canceled or censored some of the data that I offered him for studies that showed naloxone by zip code. That's okay, but while we've grown with naloxone, we have never seen naloxone reduce overdose death. The opioid treatment money and the focus is to reduce death now. Naloxone has never shown that because naloxone needs to be linked to getting people into treatment, not as a separate entity by itself. I am very disappointed because I gave him data. And the other thing is, in the treatment and prevention world, when we meet, we talk about treatment and prevention because the government efforts say that 80% of the money should go to where we are with treatment and prevention, because treatment has to pay malpractice. Treatment has to pay rent. Treatment has to pay salaries, and a lot of prevention efforts are much lower in cost, so they're less. And his effort to say that primary treatment or primary prevention is prevention, and secondary prevention is treatment, I think is very misleading and probably misinformation based on a clinical perspective. I also will close with this remark, is that the Bronx clinical assessment that was put out there was done for law enforcement, but there were three physician participants, not anonymous questions to people in agencies, but that physicians that helped guide it, and there were no physicians that helped guide the data or the recommendations. So, the false emphasis that we're not collaborating and we may be part of the problem, it really left me unsettled, and Renee and I just talked today. We're kind of business competitors. We're kitty-corner from each other, and we both believe that the treatment service can be available. It's not that it's not there, but we believe that it's underfunded, and that's treatment, not prevention. If you're going to use any tools, I ask that you consider my comments about the opioid assessment based on the Bronx model that was used, the age of the model, and the lack of actual physician guidance of the data and the recommendations. How's that for five minutes? It's okay?
Pretty close.
Any questions? No personal. We all got thick enough skin. We're good. We can agree to disagree.
So, I read through the one, you know, the one that we have now. There's another one being put up. Amy Delinky from MAC is working on another assessment thing, and she sent out a questionnaire recently, so I'm sort of waiting to see what she has to say compared to what, and that would be more of a current, a current one that they're doing. And we'll evaluate that.
That would be from the Michigan Association of Counties?
Counties, and they're affiliated with U of M and MSU. There's a whole group, collaboration group.
Right. So, thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
Yep.
Dr. Maroni, the more input we can receive, the better, whether it's from MAC, whether it's from our Health Services Department. You and I had a discussion, and I know it came up, I think, last week, about the efficacy of the DARE program. I used to participate in those a lot for fifth and sixth graders, and it's my understanding, the analysis of the, you know, the effectiveness of that kind of exposure in the fifth and sixth grade to the dangers of drug. to the dangers of drug addiction turned out to have very temporary effect. And I, and I know some of the discussion is, should we, should we put resources into, into the schools and at what age or grade level, and whether or not that's a productive use or effective use of the resources we have.
I think the specific data from the University of Illinois and the University of Kentucky showed that the 10-year follow-up for drug use had negligible effect, and the University of Illinois study showed that exposure to drug information increased drug use in DARE participants, which everybody has to admit is counterintuitive, but it had great public relations. It sounded really good, but like everything, when I bring my data, I always like to throw around evidence-based. If we go back and look, the, and you know, it sounds good because a lot of other people copied DARE. They didn't like the name, and they wanted to change it in different states. But that kind of model, but nobody ever really said, why did DARE fail? People said what happened, but the best information I saw that why DARE was a failure, don't hate It was delivered with zero tolerance from law enforcement. There was no chance to relapse and have the idea of education and prevention and public health. It was kind of seen as punitive, according to the American Psychiatric Association, the APA. So, that is my assessment of, you know, what you said about DARE. That's, that's correct.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other public input? Any other public input? Any other public input? Miscellaneous? Any miscellaneous? Any announcements? I have one. Monitor Township is holding a informational open house from 6 to 9 tonight, Monitor Township Hall to talk about Three Mile Road, which we started working on today, by the way. So, very timely. So, they'll, they'll be under construction for quite a while, along with a lot of other places, too. So, if you go down Three Mile, you live in Monitor, if you want to know what's going on, 6 to 9, it's a drop-in type thing. It's not like a formal meeting. They'll probably have maps and drawings and times and stuff like that, so stop by. I can see it out my window, so. Any other announcements? We have 2024 appointments for June. The Library Board, one five-year term. October, Land Bank Authority, one three-year term. Bay County Department of Human Services, at-large, three-year term. This is a governor's appointment. December, Bay County Veterans Repair Committee, one four-year term. Department on Aging Advisory Committee, four two-year terms. Districts 2, 4, and 6, and one at large. Is there a need for a closed session?
There is not, Mr. Chair.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.